Okay, I'd like to call the word of the school committee meeting for October second. You have before you an agenda. I would like to have a motion to approve the agenda, but I would ask an amendment to include the substitute rate under discussion, community discussion votes to be taken.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, comments from the public? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And identify yourself.
All right, I am Alice Crowley, I am president of the Nantucket Teachers Association, and I was at your last meeting where Mr. Cozart announced that he would be retiring in June. So I am here to ask the school committee, I know you stated then that, I believe his name is Glenn Pucher, would be coming in the very near future and helping you plan how you will proceed to find our next superintendent, but I would like to ask that you consider doing what Nantucket Public Schools has done in the past, which is form a committee, allow Nantucket Public Schools and employees, staff members, an opportunity to apply to be on that committee, and then maybe once the committee's formed, or maybe even before, start to select or seek out, I guess would be a better word, feedback from Nantucket Public Schools employees. I feel our voice is important as we move forward in this process. You know, the unofficial Nantucket rumor mill is that there's already a list and a committee being formed, and we're assuming that's just the Nantucket rumor mill, but we really want our members to have an opportunity to actively participate and actively play a role in the future of our schools.
Thank you very much. There has not been a committee formed, there have been, usually I don't get many phone calls, I've been getting a lot of phone calls, and so, no, decisions have not been made, and certainly I think having teachers be a key part of this are important, because I think we hired a superintendent, but you guys work with superintendent, and so I think that's very important.
Okay.
Moving on, presentation.
I'm Tracy May, little parent teacher, fully taxpayer, and I have a couple questions about the policies and some of the things that were discussed at the last meeting, just to put them on your radar. I keep going over the crowdfunding policy, GBBBD, that was approved at the last meeting, and I recall a clarifying question being asked, that it was principal notification or approval that was needed, but each time I reread this policy, I get back to the superintendent as final authority to approve any online fundraising, so the way I'm interpreting this, I might have to go to a principal for approval or notification, but that a superintendent still has final authority. And also, what was not mentioned in the discussion last time, was that for a tech request, like an iPad or a document camera, that approval needs to be written from the director of technology, so I'm just looking for clarification on what exactly are the steps, because the discussion that you all had with the public, I think, to assume that you just needed to notify your principal, and barring it was anything egregious, that it would be fine, but the way this is written, and like Alice just spoke to, now that we are going to be having some administrator approval, I think this needs to be re-looked at and made sure that the steps are not assumed, but are in fact clear, because a year or two down the road, a new superintendent might say, nope, everything needs to come across me after jumping through all these three loops first. So I had some questions about that. I also had some questions about the discussion that, in the presentation, about the tech presentation. I have some real concerns that there was no purpose for all of our admin to present, that the information that was gathered, there didn't seem to be agreement from the committee on why we were having them present, and as a parent, who comes to most of the meetings over the last year and a half, I've heard the gamut of concerns from cyberbullying, to eye strain, to headaches, to too much homework, not enough homework, but I just felt that for the length of the presentation, there did not seem to be a common purpose from the sitting board, as to why we were having this presentation, and what the next steps will be. So I am hopeful, as a parent, that this will come back around, because as somebody whose own child is into computer usage, and I agreed with Tim when he said, it does not start in sixth grade when we hand children a Chromebook, it starts in toddler years. When I'm sitting on the boat, I see little babies with iPads and phones, and I think that home issues need to be addressed at home. I've been teaching for twenty-five plus years, I used to worry about kids watching too much television, and now it's, the medium has changed, but the home issues do not go away, and I would hate to see us take a blanket statement or a blanket policy based on something that was not really clear as to what the issues are.
Does anybody want to say anything to the policy committee?
I, what I think is, if Mrs. Mayloo doesn't mind, it's for her to present through the superintendent, her specific questions, and maybe we can present at the next meeting, a direct answer for those questions, so that we can really look into, what is it you need clarification on, or everyone needs clarification on, and get together and make sure we are on the same page with what the response is in our interpretation of the policy as well, as opposed to just shooting from the hip.
Yeah, no, 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 I agree.
I respect the response.
Yeah, right.
I just wanted to get on your radar.
Well, I would like to say, though, I was the one who asked the clarifying question, because I struggled with that policy, starting last spring, reading the language that's in it, and I thought the answer that we gave was that you only need to go to your principal. Yes, the superintendent's in there, but that would be as a backup if the principal wasn't sure, or you didn't agree with your principal, et cetera. I have no objection to looking at that language and making it clear, but that's the way I interpreted it, was you just have to go to your principal unless there are some other circumstances.
Well, I think the overall purpose is to make sure that the superintendent is in the loop. Again, it could be different interpretations of that, and that, but the superintendent who is on the policy committee normally, who helps us present, and make sure we have a clear understanding, that's why I want to know specifically what the questions are, and that we come out with a specific answer. And it is a matter of not having crowdfunding or fundraising, whatever it is, online or whatever, and it be in place, and it's on the borderline of being an infraction against the policy, and the superintendent not be aware. So that's my interpretation of what we did with policy.
So you'll let us know what, and they can review it.
And Mike, looks like he had, did you want to say something, Mike?
Well, yeah, just, I think the biggest concern is that we don't allow our staff to violate the code of ethics. That's, there are some things that our staff could do and might not truly understand, so you have the principal look at it, and then the principal, and then the superintendent would look at it, much like we do for many other things now, field trips, and other fundraisers end up with a superintendent's signature, because in the, in the end, he or she is the one that it's going to fall back to, but really, that whole policy is mostly about violations of code of ethics. So I'd be happy to speak to Tracy and, and bring her concerns to the policy committee.
It sounds like there's some differences even in the way we're interpreting it, so I think it would be a good idea to get back to us.
Okay, so let's open up with the MCAS results.
If, if we can, Kelly has a boat to catch, and is going off island, so if you don't mind, if we could reverse that and start with the ESL. Okay, well, you still have a class, and you wanted to go first. Okay.
Do you want us down below?
Don't sit so close.
Should I allow her to sit?
I can stand, but thank you.
Kelly, do you want us to go down there?
If you would like to have a better view, absolutely. Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Kelly Cooney, the English learner director, and this is the English learner update for this year. First of all, we'll start with the Y. Oh, what's happening here? Hold on, this is moving, but that's not moving. Okay, thank you. Oh, there we go. Okay, thank you.
So just to duplicate, unless you want present view, that's what probably was on.
Okay.
Duplicate's probably the safest.
So I want to click on either that link or on the video.
I'll go on the video.
All right, then how do I get to your desktop then?
Just, do you want to show the video first?
Yes, please. So the Y, so before I show us our numbers and our data, I had mentioned this last week, and it's a video, last May, Brittany Beal, who's a math teacher, who was teaching the language of math, the English Language Learners at CPS, and a few new ESL teachers to the team attended MatSal, it's the Massachusetts Association of Teachers, of students of other languages, and that's where I think they got the idea, and while they were still at the conference, they were like, let's do this with our students, we'll have them make a video for their new teachers. One thing I wish my teachers knew about me. Thank you, Mr. Partner.
Hi, my name is Emily, I speak English and Spanish. My family's from Dominican Republic. I wish my teacher knew that my family helps me learn in math a lot, so I can get more smarter. This is, this is important to know about me, because math is good for me to learn more.
Hi, my name is Alexa. I speak English and Spanish. My family's from the Dominican Republic. I wish my teacher knew that my dad does. It's important to know about me, because I want her to know that I sometimes suicide.
And I speak Spanish and English. My family is from El Salvador. I wish my teacher knew. I read lots of chapter books. This is important about me, because I want her to give me some chapter books to guess more.
Hi, my name is Alexa. I speak English and Spanish. My family is from El Salvador. I wish my teacher knew that I love hooking. This is important about me, so, so you know that I will hug you a lot.
My name is Rosalie. I speak English and Spanish. My family is from El Salvador. I wish my teacher knew that I like reading, I mean writing, because I like writing animal books, and I like researching. This is important to know about me, because I, she could give me what writing, what to do.
My name is Steven. I speak Spanish and English. My family is in El Salvador. I wish my teacher knew that I did a lot of writing in my English class. This is important to know about me, because I can help people spell and learn words.
My name is Fernanda. I speak English and Spanish. My family is from Dominican Republic and Spain. I wish my third grade teacher knew that I'm good at math, so she can give me hard equations. This is important to learn about me, so she can give me hard equations.
My name is Japhet, and I speak Spanish and English, and my dad was born in El Salvador, and my mom was born in Honduras, and my brothers and me were born in Nantucket. I wish my teacher knew math was easy, so I can do it all by myself. This is important.
Cute. Okay, I'll see if I can get out of here. So, yes, those were last year's second graders in ESL pullout class, and some of them flipped, so some of them exited ESL, and some of them are still in ESL, but I think it's important for us to ground numbers in students. Can you help me hear what this is?
Yeah, let's go back to that PowerPoint.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Where did it go? This one.
Yay.
Okay. And, went from the, from the current slide?
Mm-hmm. Nope, I'll go back, we weren't that far, but that's okay, thank you. So, that was the Y, why we do the work that we do, why the numbers matter. This slide shows us the ESL team, which is growing, so we now have three ESL teachers at NIS. Last year, we had an ESL teacher who was shared between NIS and NES. We also have at the high school, a foundational class for newcomers, so while Mr. Farrell, Ms. Gurley, and Ms. Gilgan are not ESL teachers, they are content teachers who are SEI endorsed, and they're teaching a newcomer level of their content classes for our kids. So that's new and exciting. We also have Joselyn Ramirez, who is a Nantucket High School graduate, she's one of the island's success stories, so she's new in the English learner department, and she's district translator, interpreter, district bilingual support, so she works with Eileen, who's the translator, interpreter, and Joselyn does a little bit of that, she's taking the class that we're offering right now. She also is doing wonderful things, like helping to identify SLIF students, so you have to give surveys to kids to find out if they're missing some formal or interrupted former education. She's working at NIS with the math interventionist to help test some kids to see how much math that they do know, so that we know if it's language or math, so she's doing a lot of kind of more interfacing, hands-on with teachers, kids, and families, as well as some of that translation and interpreting. And all the other teachers in the district who have the SEI endorsement are technically part of the EL team. So in Massachusetts, we have SEI plus ESL, that's how we deliver our services. So SEI falls under the umbrella of English learner, so they're all part of the team as well. Enrollment. So our numbers are almost exactly where they were last year this time, which I think is interesting. NES has a huge number, they're, they're the only one that really went up by fifteen kids. Every year, they enroll about a hundred and twenty students, and of those hundred and twenty students, we give a home language survey to, I don't know, seventy? And then about half of them usually are English language learners. So there's a lot of work going on at the enrollment of K students, and then we also have had a sprinkling of newcomers showing up in August and September to all of our schools. So these numbers are different from even just two weeks ago. It takes a while for us to turn over the data in Aspen, because we have to screen the kids first. We see that their home language survey indicates another language is spoken at home, and then we have to screen them to find out if they really are English language learners, or if they happen to be bilingual, and if they know enough English.
Kelly, this chart seems to show that the numbers have gone up fairly dramatically at CPS and NHS over that week span of time.
Oh, nope, sorry, that fourteen is two thousand fourteen. Sorry, that's not the week.
Oh, fifteen fifty six, okay.
Yeah, sorry, that's the year, oh, next slide we'll show you. Well, this is our percentage per school, that's the year, two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and eighteen, where the breakdown was by school, but I'll keep showing you numbers. This is percentage per school, so thirty percent of our English learners are in grades K one, two. Fourteen percent are NIS, ten percent at CPS, twelve percent at NHS. Overall, we have about seventeen percent active English language learners. That means that they still are taking ESL classes, and they still need to take the access exam every year. Last, the summer, we exited sixty-three kids, so that means that sixty-three kids scored high enough to now be considered former L, we will monitor them closely, but if we didn't exit them all, our numbers actually are going up, we're just actually having a lot of success, especially at NIS, they come through NES with a lot of language, and it's natural if they come in at K to be out by grade five, so we're exiting the bulk of our kids at NIS, but we did also exit some students at CPS, and some students at the high school. So if we added those guys back in, you would see, we would have like over three hundred kids, but we are exiting successfully, but they're still technically English learners, they're still acquiring English, but they have the high enough score that we can consider them as former English learners technically, not yet in ESL services, but in their core content classes, the teachers should be providing supports when necessary, and still helping to grow the literacy in that content area. So this slide is also interesting to see, that since two thousand and five, the English learner population has gone up six hundred and thirty-three percent, which is huge. So it stayed somewhat stable through two thousand fifteen to two thousand eighteen. I wonder if two thousand and fifteen and sixteen of students weren't flipped, because the state was changing the numbers, so I, I don't know the story there, I wasn't here. Going to breakfast tomorrow with Jeremiah Sblain, I can ask him. So, interesting, but you guys know that story, because you've been here. Thirty-four percent of our students are multilingual, so while sixteen percent are English learners and still taking ESL, thirty-four percent of our students speak another language at home. Eight percent of those students are former English learners. We keep them as former English learners for four years, and then the state stops monitoring them, so then they become ever Ls, and then we have twelve percent never Ls, so they were students who came in, and they were, when they were screened, they didn't show up as needing ESL. So thirty-four percent of our school population speaks another language at home, and is multilingual. That's huge. That's not something that most people would think about Nantucket.
Kelly, what, what other systems would you be aware of that have that percentage?
That have thirty-four percent, fifteen percent English learners, I think Fall Rivers now, they've climbed a lot since the hurricane last year in, in Puerto Rico, same with other places. We present with a percent of our population, kind of like Amherst, actually has a large population, it's near Holyoke, Fall Rivers in the, in the twenties now. I don't know what Barnstable is, I think Barnstable's close to ours, I don't know what the total multilingual, I would have to call my friends to see, but we present like a gateway city. I think that if we had more people on island, we would probably count as a gateway city, but because our census doesn't show our true numbers, but we, we present like a gateway city as far as our data goes. So where are our kiddos from? Fifty-four percent of our English learners are American-born. That's huge. Forty-six percent are from other countries. Of those other countries, the largest source of our immigration is El Salvador, as we know, it's super exciting. I met a woman in New York City the other day from El Salvador, and when I tried to explain to her that I live on this tiny little island, and there are a lot of Salvadorans, she kind of didn't believe me, and I'm like, no, really, I know my Spanish, she's crazy, but really, we have a lot of Salvadorans, and then I showed her a little picture, and she was so proud and happy. So El Salvador, and then Brazil. What languages do they speak? So of those thirty-four percent of our population that are multilingual, bilingual, seventy-eight percent of that home language is Spanish. So we're largely with our multilingual, bilingual populations, Spanish-speaking. And after comes Portuguese, so it's a growing population. My friend, the old director in Martha's Vineyard, and my friend, the old director in Barnstable, both have contacted me, asking about our numbers. There's of also, they've exited, and there's also studying, so their, kids are exiting, and now they're right back, you know, a month later, so in August, it looked like we were down sixty, and the same kind of ratios are happening in Barnstable and Martha's Vineyard. Vineyard and Barnstable are Brazilian, Brazilian Portuguese, so they asked if we had more Brazilian Portuguese. I said, no, still largely, now we have a lot of Dominicans. In the past couple months, we've had a lot of Dominicans come in, Salvadorans, a couple Brazilians. When we look back to this, so you'll notice here, we have Bulgarian, the language, this is, so we have five percent, twenty-nine students. When you look here where they're born, so our Bulgarian-speaking students are not being born in Bulgaria, so they're, all of them born here. It's just interesting, I love looking at numbers. Any questions? Other, so just some more statistics, sixteen percent of our English learners also have IEPs, also have special needs. Only four percent are first-year English learners, so we're not this place with tons of newcomers pouring in. So in kindergarten, they're largely little kids born here, and then we have some newcomers coming in, but not many. We see a couple sprinkling the high school, middle, and, and NIS, but not many during the course of the year, most of our students have been here with us. And four of our students so far, or less than one percent, are SLIF, so those are students with limited or interrupted formal and former education, and right now, one of the tasks that Joselyn Ramirez is doing is interviewing students. So we're not interviewing to label kids, to not look at them with a deficits approach, we want to know if they're SLIF or not, just so that we can better plan programming. So we know if a student comes in, missed school, and is now thirteen, and hasn't been to school since fourth grade, well then we know, wow, it's not just English, we're going to have different kinds of programming, different kind of coursework, that we're going to need to do to make sure our students have success. And it's tricky, because the guidance around that says that our students still need to be taught grade-level standards, but with a lot of project-based and that kind of landscape. So it really takes our talented, talented teachers to be able to do that, to be able to say, I know what the sixth grade standards are, in order to get here, I'm going to have to back up and come back to sixth grade, and that's really tough to do, and it means we will need more PD as we start to look at that population and, and program. But our foundational class at the high school right now is an attempt to service our newcomers and our SLIF students, because some of our SLIF students though have been here a while, so I'm grappling with that and asking my colleagues for advice. We know our newcomers might come out of the program a lot faster than a SLIF student, for example. So, English learner data and accountability. Ls take access in January, which is soon, it's in three months, so I'm a little bit anxious about that, every second counts, so that's why from day one, I want my ESL teachers teaching in the curriculum, we don't really have the month to kind of routine, our routines are while we're in the book, in the curriculum, doing what we need to be doing. Our students, luckily, many of them are fortunate enough to go home, or to go to their heritage home, meaning they go and maybe see their grandparents, so their parents can work extra hard and not have to worry about daycare. It's wonderful, we want our kids to keep their home language, that they can talk to their family members, it's a little bit hard when our test comes in January, so we have to catch up for, we know all students kind of slide in the summer, so we have to extra catch up with English language learners. Ls and Fs are combined for MCAS accountability data, and contrary to popular belief, so next time that you're out at the coffee shop, and someone's complaining about our English learners and our data, please be sure to tell them, our Ls do as well and better in some areas of accountability, so we get points for our Ls. This try, this slide is tricky, the one on the right made progress, Edwin, now ignore that, I kept it in because it's in your packet. The state changed the accountability formula in the past ten days, so I had written to them, asking why Edwin gave us different data than our accountability, when accountability was still embargoed, and then they wrote back and said, oh, we have to change that. So you can even ignore that, they changed the formula, which they haven't told me yet what that is, so let's focus here. So on access, students make progress, it's kind of tricky, the formula, but basically the state wants them to get to a four-point-two within six years. The faster you get there, the higher your progress. The longer that it takes you, the harder it is to get there, and the less, your, lower your score is going to be as far as making progress goes. So the three data points when making progress is considered is the previous year's access score compared to this year's access score, how many other kids had that score in year one, and what that score was, how far away it is from four-point-two, so they made some formula for what they How many other kids had that score in year one and what that score was, how far away it is from four point two, so they made some formula for what they project. How long it takes to get closer to four point two and how many years they've been in math. So kids could have the exact same score on access, but if I've been here one year and Pauline's been here four years, I'm gonna make progress and there's a good chance you didn't. Cause I got there in one year. So it's kind of complicated formula. Um the access accountability counts, you get points towards your district and your school accountability. So Mike will show you what that looks like later. So um for the, now they're blending grades three to eight, so in grades three to eight, we got two out of four points overall. Because of our access scores, uh which if you look here, it's because of this score and this um actually um in talks with the state over too, cause I think they made a mistake. So um because if you look at the way that they configured the new stuff, their seventeen didn't change. So they're getting back to me on that, otherwise, all students with the new formula um increased from seventeen to eighteen. And so from grades three to eight, um we got two out of those four points toward our accountability. And at the high school, you got three out of the four points toward your accountability because of how the kids did on the access test. So that means to me, um yay, our Ls are doing well, our teachers are doing a good job. All of us need to extra be thinking, we have three months to the kids take this test. Their English, their reading test could be reading about math problems. If they've been here more than a year, they're expected to grow, so all of our Ls in every classroom need to be talking, reading and writing. Because ESL can't teach all of that in one period a day. Tests test them in math, language of math, social studies, science and ELA, and it tests them in reading, writing, listening and speaking, it's a really hard test. Um another important point here is our um district accountability, what where we are meeting our target is sixty-three percent of our kids made progress. And the state's was fifty-one, so that for me is another huge win, like yay, doing better than the state, that's always good. Another way we look at our L data is um how many kids are able to exit the program. So in two thousand and eighteen, twenty-two percent of our kids, sixty-three total, um got a four point two, so they're now former Ls. Means more work for the rest of us when we monitor, our teachers know what I mean by that. And um the state numbers nineteen point eight, so we beat the state by a tiny little bit, but that's always good. Um if we look at our MCAS data, so I just wanted to just say so that when we're on the ferry or at the coffee shop and someone says, those English learners, it's their fault. It's not their fault, they're doing great. This is for example, achievement data, grades three to eight, all students versus Latino and Hispanic, I couldn't get this number for L. They have to be a certain number of Ls per grade, but I think we have that many kids per grade in three, four, five, six, maybe six, seven and eight, that actually made it, so we can't get the data anymore. I better think of it. So anyway, out of a total of six points in achievement, um all students got six out of twelve. And if you look over here to our Hispanic and Latino subgroup, so that would be our Ls, our never Ls, our Fels. Seven out of the twelve points, so one point higher than what all students could do, so. Just kind of figured I'd throw some of these in here, just so that when we're having those conversations, we can talk numbers. Um here is high school. So eight out of twelve possible points for all kids, nine out of twelve possible points for Hispanic Latino. Here, we actually got Ls and Fel data for NIS, so it must have been the middle school that threw our numbers off, cause they weren't twenty per grade. Um Ls performed comparably to non-Ls on MCAS in grades three to eight. So what that means is our Ls are performing compared to other Ls in the state, better than other Ls in the state. So you get, it's a different way of, they compare them to other Ls. But as far as accountability points that we get for our kids, um eight out of twelve at NIS, English learner and Fels and seven out of twelve. Our Ls are in the forty-second percentile, so if you had a line from zero to a hundred, our Ls in the state would be in that forty-two from the top spot. Compared to other Ls in the state, our all students would be in the thirty-sixth spot, so a couple spots behind compared to other Ls in the state. For example, tons of data you can look at, you can pull it any way you want, but for my argument, when we're going to say our Ls are are great assets to our community, they bring. Diverse perspectives, multilingualism, and they're not hurting our data. CPS all students, um Ls and former Ls, four out of eight points, whereas all kids, seven out of twelve points. Ratio wise, same sort of thing. That said, sixty-five percent of all students are making progress toward the goal, whereas set fifty-seven percent of Ls are making progress, so there's a little bit of a difference there. We always can can, you know, work differently perhaps. It does get harder as kids hit middle and high school, because the content becomes that much more complex. So it's harder to learn English and all of a sudden be learning algebra. We also have quite a few SLIFs, we have not started identifying them yet, Jocelyn's going in next week. So um we have some people out in our department, so she's doing translating and she helps with special ed, so she hasn't gotten there, so it won't be in our October Sims. So um high school, all students compared to um Hispanic Latino subgroup, forty-four percent of all students are making progress toward the goal. Sixty-eight percent of Latino kids are making progress toward their goal. So that's good news. All in forty-third percentile compared to state. I don't think they gave me an L because of the numbers at the high school and only having one year of MCAS, like ninth until tenth, there aren't as many numbers of kids. So what's new in two thousand and eighteen? So we already talked about a bilingual support specialist, I think she's a huge aspect um asset to the team, not only because she's from the island and she knows everyone. Which actually hugely helps, um I'll jump down to here, we had our our first LPAC meeting this year. And thanks to Jocelyn and her mother Lucia, who works at NES, we had all kinds of people show up and then it turns out it's because they like called their friends and asked people at church. But it was awesome, cause we had a really, really good meeting, so it's an asset. She has connections and credibility and trust that that would take me, you know, twenty years of living here to get from people. So huge asset plus um quick learner, did a great job educating her here on Nantucket. Um we have a new ESL position at NIS and two new staff. So we have David Foley, it's a new position at NIS. And we also have another um Nantucket Islander, Lena Civetta Risi, who has joined our staff, she replaced someone who left last year, so yay. Um we have the newcomer foundational program at the high school, so that's new and exciting. We have the innovation pathway at the high school, which includes Ls, low income kids, kids of color, kids on IEPs and. All other kids as well, but it's intentionally for historically underrepresented youth. And our um our uh pathway liaison is also a Nantucket graduate, she's Drew Moore, she graduated around the same age group as Jocelyn. Um maybe a little tiny bit older, so that's also a huge win for um our school system. Identifying SLIF students is new and then the LPAC, you had asked for um updates on that, our first meeting went well. Probably shouldn't tell you this, but you have a uh support group in your technology question. When they were saying, when I asked, well, would you guys like to hear more about their interest in school uniforms? Definitely um heritage language classes in middle schools, so that their kids could start learning to read and write Spanish younger. And anti-tech, not anti, but questioning. So I just thought, huh, that's funny, I don't know that we would have guessed that that would be your your your, you know. Yeah, they they were like, oh, our kids aren't learning their penmanship and there's a lot of time on computers. And so we also know that a lot of our L families may be a little bit more conservative in that way. So you have allies in that area, so you might wanna ask them to come next time you wanna talk about tech. Um and that's it, any questions? Yes? Is she allowed to ask a question from the audience, I don't know how this works? Oh, okay, yep, yep.
The the SLIF screening is there, um with a way that students who do speak English as a as their first language, but maybe come from Jamaica or another country where English is the first language, but their education would have been different? Have access to that same type of screening or?
We could, you know, that's something we could absolutely talk about, because I think that probably some of the programming might be similar, right? When we're talking about the landscape of a of a content area. Um right now, we're giving them, we, that's like something I need to talk to my colleagues about, different districts are doing different things, some of it would be screening in the home language literacy. But then it gets tricky because if the kid is verbal and doesn't have literacy in the home language, so the state has actually made some. Uh numeracy tests, but not just like five times ten, but with that kind of a more conceptual for higher, for gr- older kids, so yes, we could talk about that. We could look at what is hard though, if you try to pull language out of the mix, it's hard to find things that where you can find their numeracy. So first, if if they have Spanish, so we try to do reading and writing and now math and Spanish.
Portuguese, uh are we doing anything there?
So we are hoping to, our interpreter, translation, translator class just began last Friday night, Friday and Saturday. Um and we do have five Portuguese speakers in that, so we're hoping from there to be able to grow at the very least. Um volunteers to help us in the school system, but um my hope would be going forward to add another position to the department and hopefully to find a a Spanish speak, uh Portuguese speaking one. Or someone who speaks both languages would be even better.
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
So students who you've identified have now moved on to the their Fel category or FELD. Would you, after monitoring their, you know, school or would you ever move them back to the L program, would that happen?
That's a really good question, it does happen. So um last year, we started with um all the schools, that's part of the work I did at faculty meetings. And with tech, we made our forms so that they're now in Aspen and teachers can go on and and fill in how the students are doing. Part of the team decision should be, huh, if this kid isn't making progress, is it due to their English language development? Or is it social emotional, is it these other things and we can try other interventions? So if there's an interventionist in the building or an after school program for help, does that help first? But if we discern that it's actually because they need more, another dose of ESL, then you would put them back in ESL. So it's a good question.
Thank you, and then I was wondering if you could touch upon the newcomer program, any any chats and just give us some more information about what that entails for new students coming into the school.
So we looked at um their ELD level, the newcomers, and we thought, you know, it's really not fair to the kids to throw them into algebra. When they literally are just learning how to say, I have to go to the bathroom, I'm hungry, uh counting to ten, you know, basic, you know, travel English, travel foreign language. So um we actually, with Dr. Bucky and Jen, asked for staff members to kind of volunteer. Which was great, because we didn't wanna kind of force it on someone who maybe doesn't feel comfortable taking that on. So this summer, we built curriculum with Ms. Gurley and Mr. Farrell. And um we're still building, it's it's really the beginning stages, but and I will be meeting with them the third Wednesday of every month. And trying to get my hands on them for some PDs, but they will be working on in a foundational class, it's it's language and content, but like super heavy dose. I'm not expecting them to come out of foundational BioCast and the MCAS test. But we want them to have enough language, so that then when they go into Bio, they have the language to succeed.
And on the social aspect, do you try to match them up with a student that maybe speaks their language to bring them around the school and just have a?
That's something we need to work on in advisories, so that's a good idea in next year. Um we need, yeah.
I think that's really important for new students who feel out of place, don't feel, you know, they feel comfortable with speaking English.
And in big cities, that's huge, turns out here, because of the nature of the island, they really do know each other, so they're in advisories. So the kids, it's very rare that a kid will show up that doesn't have a connection, we have a Fel though, who did. And we reached out to guidance and we asked to put her in a certain advisory, because she's a senior, she's not going to be, but the ESL teachers. Um reaching out to her, even though she just exited to make sure she has that social emotional. Um her former L director said, well, I'm kind of worried about her being FELD, cause now she's not gonna have that safety net, she'll just be mainstreamed. So that is something that we're continuing to grow. We also would like to um think about doing um an after school program, that's kind of more of a club for our English learners. So we're kind of thinking about how we would do that and have it be at least six to twelve, maybe another eight to grade three to eight. But how can we have our students even mentor each other informally through an after school club?
I think that's really important, I'm just envisioning, you know, first day of school, lunch room, who do you sit with? Just having that connection, you know, coming in from day one would be really.
They don't come in day one, that's the kind of crazy thing, so tomorrow at nine AM, they might show up at one of our guidance offices and and they're there.
It's a bit more intimidating, because then everybody has, you know, their books of friends in there.
Yes. And that's why Jocelyn's role, like I I could honestly have five of her and she would be gazy, cause that's some, if I had another version of her, that's something I would have her doing. Like when kids come in, she'll help with the registration, she could shadow, but right now, she can do it if she happens to not have other things scheduled that day, but absolutely.
Thank you, I I would appreciate it, not that you don't have enough to do.
No, it's all good.
Well, b- between Reader and Jen, you've asked the three questions that I had, but my next, I guess, you've and you've just led on to the next one on funding. You've obviously had some new positions this year and I recognize we're only into our second month, but um what would be on your wish list with budget coming up?
My wish list always is um what's gonna um closest to kids, so uh definitely a bilingual guidance counselor. This year, we did do our best trying to recruit a Spanish speaking guidance counselor, so it wasn't that we didn't try, we just, we had a hard time. But there are other ways to think creatively about that, so we could have school adjustment counselors or other family liaisons. So in Boston Public and in Fall River and in Southbridge, um the L department had like a family outreach um coordinator position. And that way you can kind of work around with what people's assets are, we want people definitely to become guidance counselors, but in the meantime. So so something like that, so definitely our kids need um liaisons to help them with all the social emotional, that's bilingual. Absolutely, so someone in that area and someone to help with um identification and registration. Potentially that could be the same person, but we have to screen the kids and identify parents within ten days. And because I have high expectations and high support from my teachers, sometimes it's tricky, because the teachers need to be planning their lessons. And then during their free period, they're actually screening kids, which then I know is kind of unfair, cause I might pop in to observe them. And they didn't have their planning period the day before, because they were doing another part of their job that really should be a different position, like an intake person is what other systems have.
And do you see that working, like to have one person that could work system wide or having somebody in each school idea?
Hey, it's all about money, if you had a million, million dollars, then yes, one for every child, but no, we could do it one person, I mean, whatever we have, we'll always make the person. Um train them so that they can do the best that they can to service as many kids as possible.
Okay, thanks Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you, um Pauline did address, I was gonna say if you had that wish list which I've mentioned before. I would um encourage you, you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you for the numbers and the information and I'm happy to see that you got some staff support more than you had before. I I think um the bilingual guidance counselor, it's really important given the numbers and and things that we have and and hopefully we'll be able to.
And the trauma our kids come with, it's not like the regular old American high school stuff.
Exactly.
It's a whole different ballgame.
So um keep up the good work, I would encourage teachers, the ones that are being asked to do, to evaluate and that sort of thing, is just keep the faith and and do the best that you can. We realize everyone's human and if if we could have two of ourselves, we would, but that's just not the way it is. But do the best you can and be encouraged that this is a learning process, our numbers and breakdown of everything is growing, it's growing at a fast pace. We're doing our best, I think, to accommodate all of that and to not give up and get too frustrated, just uh reach out, communicate with each other. Uh and then make sure you let an admin know your needs.
Thank you, we do have, we're blessed, the ESL teachers as well as the, so the rest of the teachers are also, I see, as long as they have an L in the room, they're SEI teachers. We are really blessed with great teachers here who do care about kids, so that helps.
Thank you all.
Kelly, the data that you presented in your charts, is that all based on the access test?
Nope, the after, the first two, it's MCAS, accountability. Originally, I was going after Mike and Jean, but then um Mr. Kozor, I'm taking a class, cause I'm a big geek and it starts today at seven thirty. And she's with kind of a guru in our field, so that's why um we switched. So from here, it goes to. MCAS. So um I probably should have made that more clear, but that's um ELA math, science, so that's their MCAS.
Well, I'm asking, first of all, yes, please ask, keep asking for more people. With the growing population, you know, the more staff we can have to work with these kids, the better. I'm asking, because I've tried, Mike, I swear I've tried, and you may be able to help answer some of this wherever you are. Um looking at the subgroups, in MCAS, there appears to be a pretty significant discrepancy. Between how our Ls are doing in the state. Um even more in math than in language, but in. Um, even more in math than in language, but in languages, in reading, language arts.
It depends on, we can meet if you. It depends on the grade level. Today at CPS I presented and we had one grade level where our Ls compared to state Ls were at sixty-seven, grade six, ELA sixty-seven percent. So they were pretty high up in line, so it depends.
Well, I, some of them were, but I ended up going to the all grades three through eight.
Mm-hmm.
Because there were some differences at each grade level. Um, and in the all three through eight, I mean, we seem to be at about on the exceeding and making progress. Whatever the Es and Ms mean. We seem to still be at only about half what the state is. Um.
Then it depends on the grade level. We just looked today. Grade six compared to other Ls in the state, they're like sixty-seven percent ELA. So it depends on the grade. But yes, absolutely, trust me. I'm always for improvement. All the teachers know I can always go to their grade level team meetings, my faculty meetings. Unfortunately, their faculty meetings and not PD, like there's so much we could do if I had more time. Um, all of the standards have, so ELA has reading and writing and speaking and listening in our ELA standards. Most people only know about reading and writing. Once we amplify talk and academic discourse in ELA, math practices, they're they're right in there. Critique the reasoning of others. Like so in math, kids are supposed to be saying, oh, I think the answer is ten, because blah, blah, blah. And before the teacher says, correct, what's who the next person, number seven, another kid should say, oh, I disagree. Oh, I agree and I solved it differently. This is what I did. Like academic discourse is built into the math standards through practices. Science has it as well. So even just through discourse, if all of us worked on it, we would see all of our data increase. So absolutely, I'm always for looking at how we can get better, but uh, be careful to make a blanket statement. Depends on the grade and the subject. Sometimes our Ls are doing better, um, of course, compared to other Ls in the state than our regular kids are doing compared to um, all kids in the state. So if you wanna look at that, we can sit and look at it. Love data. We have work to do. I'm not discounting.
I'd I'd love to know what else, what more we can do. And if that's a staffing issue, then ask for it, please.
Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate that. And our kids and our families do too. They were like teary eyed when they saw their kids at the LPAC meeting. They were so excited to hear them speak in English and they're really just.
Yeah. I mean, please understand that I understand.
A blessing to our community.
Our growth in this population has been almost indescribable in the last ten years. Um, and we're catching up and we're definitely doing better than we were four or five years ago, but I still think we have a ways to go.
Thank you.
Penny?
I'll set. And you, what language are you learning in high school?
Chinese.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Cause I don't know any Chinese, so I can't ask a question, other than you know.
Thank you Kelly.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm gonna miss yours. Thank you. I can't get out of here. Thanks for helping me with that. Thank you. And thank you. I will catch up with Mike tomorrow about his very exciting presentation.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly.
Mister Chairman, may I just do a uh, quick preface? Um, I wanna remind the school committee that this is the overview tonight. This is not the deep dive. Um, analysis with the administration that will follow on the um, twenty-third. So this is really the five thousand foot level, um, and we'll get a lot more specifics um, in a couple of weeks. But we wanted to get the information that we um, that had been embargoed in your hands. So that you could um, begin to to look at this. And I don't, Michael and Jean will tell you, they're not gonna go into everything that was in your packet. Um, tonight.
Is this still technically preliminary? I mean, is it subject to changes? This is the real thing?
No. No, it is, it is, this is the real thing.
Yep.
Okay.
Speak, take me a second to sign back in. Because you can have two people signed in at once, which I guess makes sense. How do I get rid of that in the bottom? Cause I'm trying to figure out. This little guy.
Um, I think it goes away after a little bit. I think it's.
Okay. So good evening. My name is Michael Horton. I'm the Director of Curriculum and Assessment for STEM and I'm joined by.
I'm Jean Witt. I'm Director of Curriculum and Assessment for the Humanities.
So in your packets, you have uh, all the slides from this presentation as well as some supplementary reports, which I'm gonna refer to. I'm not gonna go through, or excuse me, we are not gonna go through line by line. Um, one of our goals here is to share that overview. Um, one of our second goals is to explain how the new accountability system is working. So if you'd like to look at all those supplementary reports, you can and um, do some of your analysis between now and when we do the deep dive. So new for twenty eighteen, um, there's no more CPI for English Language Arts and Math in grades three through eight, okay? Um, the high school is still a legacy for both ELA and math, so um, all the comparisons between the last two years are still CPI. As well as science is still a legacy in grades five and eight. That is changing this spring. Um, two thousand nineteen is first year Next Gen um, for um, everyone. It'll be interesting to see what happens, whether it's a hold harmless, no data, the way last year, there was no data, there was no accountability level. It was a baseline. Twenty seventeen was a baseline. It's very important to understand that all this data at the moment is just comparing how we performed twenty eighteen to our baseline in twenty seventeen. Um, the state is comparing one year to one year. In many cases, it's not the same kids to the same kids. It's grade three to the previous year, grade three. It's grade ten to the previous year, grade ten. It's CPS as a whole compared to CPS as a whole. Now, two thirds of those students are the same because six and seventh moves up, move up to seven and eight. But you lose a cohort of eighth graders and you gain a cohort of sixth graders. It's very important. State acknowledges this and through time, they're gonna have more data over three, four, or five years and focus a little bit more on growth of actual kids. To kids, kids to themselves, but for the majority of this presentation, it's just twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen, which is new. So in three through eight, without CPI, this this um, scoring scale is four forty to five sixty, okay? And I talked about that last year. It's now in effect, okay? So CPI, remember, is two hundred to two eighty. The new scale, a lot of times you'll see in the further reports, is between four forty and five sixty, okay? Why do I say this? It's because for the first time, the state is averaging, they're averaging how the school did as a whole for all their students in their grade. And setting a target based upon that average. So if you remember for years, going back two thousand and six, it was everyone will be one hundred by twenty fourteen. Everyone will cross that magic bar and be two forty proficient and above. Well, in two thousand and twelve, the state realized, well, a lot of schools aren't gonna make it. Um, let's change the rules. So let's say by twenty seventeen, you have to cut your gap in half. So if you're at eighty percent, you would figure out what your gap is. Okay, I gotta go up twenty percent. Cut it in half, so let's just get to ninety between twenty twelve and twenty seventeen. So everyone had gap meeting achievement targets for those few years. If you remember the last couple of years, we we went to Park, we went to Online, we stayed with Park, we went back to Next Generation MCAS in twenty seventeen. So for a while, you actually could not compare years to years. That is why we're looking at last year, twenty seventeen as a baseline for grades three through eight. And we're really just comparing how we did this year relative to last year. What is also new is in terms of accountability, um, I skipped one. So what's interesting is instead of trying to get everyone to one hundred or cut those gaps in half. Um, what's actually a little more fair about this, and you'll see where our data looks good for us. All we have to do is meet our incremental target from the previous year. So if your baseline was a four forty average, you'll see every kid got the bottom on the test. Um, you probably wanna get up to four fifty or something the next year and you wanna go up ten points. Um, as you go higher up, it's harder to move from say five fifty to five sixty, so your target might be a fraction of a point. Generally speaking, the state set targets of one point five points. So the average scaled score, the target is one point five points over the previous year. If we were down lower, they might bump that up a little bit to try to close the achievement gap a little bit quicker, okay? Um, first time that the state is setting targets for each individual school based upon their own data from the previous year, using averages. Okay? And let that sink in a little bit. This is the first time this is happening. Um, for accountability, there's basically um, two buckets. It's fascinating how across the state, we have K through eight schools. We have six through twelve schools, we have three, four, five schools, we have four through six schools, we have nine through twelve schools, we have eight through twelve schools. So the state basically says, okay, anyone who's nine through twelve, you are a high school. And if you're mixed across those grades, your nine through twelve kids are compared against high schools. And your kids in anything else are compa- are considered non-high schools. So what's fascinating is that NIS and CPS are in the same bucket. So in a lot of the reports, the data of NIS is actually being compared to CPS and vice versa. That is a first, okay? So right now, the state just has high schools, nine through twelve, and everyone else is considered non-high school. That, they just try to simplify because there's so many different possible structures of of schools across the Commonwealth. Um, met target or partially met target. At the moment, it's really just two levels, okay? If you remember, accountability was five levels. One, you were doing really well. Five was a state takeover. Think Holyoke, think Lawrence, think uh, Southbridge. Um, we've flirted with level two, level three um, for many years. Now it's, you know, you either met your target at the seventy-five percent or higher, which is the target we're gonna share in a minute, or you've partially met the target. So there's just two categories. You've either met or partially met. So anyone below seventy-five percent of meeting of your target is considered partially met. If you fall in the bottom ten percentile, okay, of all your scores kind of put together from all these different indicators. Then you're labeled as requiring assistance. That's similar to basically the old level five kind of, kind of status. If you remember two years ago, that was a twenty percentile number. And one of our schools was at the twenty percentile. And the the concern was, wow, if the school dips to the nineteenth percentile, they'd automatically be in the commissioner's list of a school requiring assistance. So it's interesting to see the state has now changed that, oh, you know, maybe we're not quite ready or not have the resources for the bottom twenty percent. But now if you're in the bottom ten percentile, you are automatically are placed on the commissioner's watch list, if you will, or requiring assistance. So um, Jean's gonna go through, um, the way we've reported data in the past is looking at the achievement labels in terms of how many uh, percentage of students are exceeding their expectations. How many met expectations, partially and not meeting expectations. In all these reports, you'll see the twenty seventeen baseline and twenty eighteen. We also threw in the state for twenty eighteen. And a very common thing to always do is add up those two columns on the right together. Add up the percentages of kids who met and exceeded. In other words, made that old kind of bar, that that target. And compare it to previous year and also compare it to that state kind of summary. This is kind of the old. This is still in existence um, for ways looking at data, but this is how we've presented data in the past. So we just thought we'd start with this and then I'm going to show you how the new accountability system works.
Okay, so essentially what you have is the, this is NIS and we have a slide for each of the schools. And this is the achievement um, distribution for ELA. So there are four categories, um, not meeting, partially meeting and meeting, meeting expectations and exceeding expectations. And as Mike said, the meeting expectations and exceeding expectations are that piece that factors into our accountability. Um, so we want to move students into um, those levels. And and hopefully we want to move them from the partially meeting and the um, not meeting up to the next levels. Um, so you can see that third grade, we have the first baseline, um, and we have thirty-six percent of the students. Meeting or exceeding expectations. And then in two thousand and eighteen, there's a slight dip to thirty-one percent of the students um, meeting or exceeding expectations. So we know that this is, this is somewhere where we have work to do and what I like about this data is this data is is um, grade to grade. So it's not the same cohort of kids. So this tells me this is what, where we need to look at our curriculum and our focus and our alignment. Um, and look at at that, um, which I feel we can have a direct impact on. Um, in fourth grade, we had thirty-four percent students meeting expectations or exceeding expectations in two thousand and seventeen. And that increased this year. Um, it was a very good increase for the fourth grade. They increased to um, fifty-two percent of students. So more than half of our students are meeting or exceeding expectations. And then in fifth grade, we went from thirty-seven percent also to increase to um, forty-five percent of our students meeting or exceeding expectations. So some good growth that we're seeing happening over the years. Um, and hopefully we'll continue to see this as these students move forward. You can also look at this data in another way, and this is very helpful, is to look at how one cohort performed one year. So third grade in two thousand and seventeen, and then look at how that same group did in two thousand and eighteen. So there you can see is there a progression um, as we're moving through the grades in our curriculum. Um, so that's very important. One thing that I wanted to note um, that is new in the accountability and we we didn't point out and I apologize because it's diverges a little bit from the five thousand foot view. But I do think it's important. Um, meeting expectations and exceeding expectations. Those are parameters that were given to or assigned to students who take the regular MCAS. We have a large, or not large, but probably a significant number of students with special needs who also take the MCAS alt. In the past, the MCAS alt was not coded in such a way that students were said to be meeting or exceeding expectations. Now they are. So all of our students are contributing to our data for accountability. Um, so I think that's like great to see that the state is finally um, establishing a metric whereby they're. At least acknowledging the progress and performance of our students who are on MCAS alt.
So we're not gonna go line by line, line through all the data. You have the data in there. We're just trying to point out, you can make a bunch of statements and analysis. Um, yes, it's it's true that if you look at third grade of third grade, the the met, the number that met it went down. At the same time, so did the number of not meeting it, okay? So there's some good news. And that's kind of another theme that you're here tonight is, is there's mixed results. There's a lot of places, there was a lot of pauses. Um, but there's a, you know, a little bit of a drop there, but if you look from twenty seven, twenty eighteen, um, a lot fewer students did not meet expectations. You can see where they all ended up. They ended up up in in partially meeting. You can look through that data, so we're just gonna scroll through. You can look at math, okay, and do the same kind of exercise, look from year to year, add it up, compare to the state, also look to see how much change in not meeting. Or you can look at same kids, the same kids. You can compare twenty seventeen grade three to twenty eighteen grade four, as as Jean pointed out. As we, you know, look through, also in your packet, there's there's CPS data, okay? You can do the same exercise. There's math, so slow down one second. We're we're cruising.
Sorry.
Um, math information to look at and you will find almost an equal number of strengths as as there are weaknesses in areas to improve. And then science, okay? Lot of numbers, lot of percentages. So what we did, hi- high school. So what we did, high school, is that basically we came up with this summary slide that, in case you missed it, okay? In case you looked at all the percentages and glaze, eyes glaze over, there are a lot of areas where we had a lot of growth, and then there's a lot of places not yet, okay? This is grade level to grade level. And I'll say it again, that the state is really just comparing how we performed in 2018 to how we performed in 2017. So different kids to different kids. So in this slide, you can look at all these positives and all these areas that we need to look into. We're not quite there yet.
And I think one of the things you'll notice if you look closely at these is that for all grades, we can see a mixture of both. There are some positives and growth for ELA and math at the various grade levels. There are some not-yets. So we have our areas of strength to recognize and build on, and then we also know where we need to target our energy in order to improve.
Just bear with me for a minute. How can I apologize if this is just my not understanding how this works? Near the bottom on growth, it says grade seven math, meeting and exceeding increased.
Yep.
On the opposite side, grade seven math, it says not meeting, increased. How could they both increase?
Because remember, there's four categories. So when you add up the percentage of students who met or exceeded, okay, from 2017 to 2018 in grade seven, it increased from 33% met it in 2017 to now 39%.
Met or exceeded, the top two.
Right, in 2018.
The top two.
Remember, not meeting is the bottom category. So when the not meeting number went up, it meant more kids were technically in warning. So over here-
So that skips the partial. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So if you want to do a visual, this kind of happened. We had more kids who moved up here, but unfortunately, at the same time, we had a few more kids who also-
No, no, no.
So this is where you'll see-
What I missed was that it skips the partial.
Yes.
Right.
Partially meeting, okay.
Yeah. So then we did one more slide where if you want to, oh, let's get that one. Okay, so what we did was, if you want to look at same kids, the same kids, here are all the places where the students really grew a lot, one year to the next, okay? And then here are some places where we dropped a little bit. So we just categorized everything into growth and not yet. So all those early charts you see of just the percentages of those achievement levels, basically here's all the statements that go with from one year to the next. Just same grade level, same grade level, or in this slide, same kids to same kids. So a mixed bag where you can see there's a lot of positives, and there's also some not-yets.
And we do owe some credit to the NIS staff members who pointed out in our presentation that instead of having it as positives and negatives, we should have it as growth and not yet. And it's evidence of a growth mindset, which I think is something that we're trying to really foster and instill in our students and our faculty. Just wanted to point that out. That's my little shout-out.
So I think, so this is the placeholder slide. In your packets, you have a bunch of accountability. And what I'd like to do is show you, you know, since I have to start, you know, from scratch here, is this is all public right now. So if you go to our website, and you scroll down to that second page, a lot of great links, Department of Education. If you go to student and families, and you go to school and district data, and this is all live, public right now, and you kind of hover over to school and district information, this really cool map comes up. Who doesn't like maps, okay? So for me, as visual person, hey, cool, I live here. Let's go see what's going on in Antucket. But if I wanted to see what's going on in Norfolk County, I could. So if I click on Antucket, and then, oh, west Tisburg, let's see, no, let's see what's going on in Antucket. And then we have the district and all the schools here, okay? So just as an example, we'll start with intermediate school. Not going to do all of them, because you have all these supplementary reports in your packet. But just to show you how this new system is working, click on accountability, and it's really cool, new report comes up. And yes, it no longer says preliminary, it says official, okay? So if you look at NIS, right after that, you see, wow, NIS made it. That's awesome. The target, remember, was 75%. So NIS made 78%, okay? That is fantastic. Because of that, NIS is labeled, remember, there's only two, either requiring or not requiring. NIS's label is not requiring assistance or intervention, okay? I'll come back to the percentile later. So if you want to look at the overall, and I'm going to blow this up here for a second. How did we get to that 78? Because that's probably the best I can fit it. So working from the bottom up, here's where we end up with 78%. How did NIS get 78%? Well, there's two columns. There's all students in that first column, which ended up with a 60% of meeting the targets. Then there's low performing students, ended up with 95%. And when you average these two together, we ended up with 78. There's a little bit of rounding going on, but ended up with 78%. That's how we made it. So even though we were a little bit below the target individually for all students, we crushed it with our lowest performing students in 2018, okay? We met pretty close to our total target of 7.6 by earning a 7.2 out of 7.6, ended up with 95%. Keep in mind, I think it's the fourth time I'm saying this. This is just 2017 to 2018. Lowest performing students, they say is the bottom quartile. So it's how the bottom 25% in 2018 compared relative to the bottom 25% of our own kids in 2017, okay? These numbers here, seven out of 12 for achievement, it's not 60%, okay? It's really misleading. Six out of eight, you know, it's not 20%. This column works on its own as a weighting, okay? So that adds up to 100. And what basically you have is kind of a factor, I would say, instead of really being weighted, is your achievement is .6. So if you do .6 times 12, .2 times 8, .1 times 4, .1 times 4, for these different indicators, achievement, growth, there's no high school completion for NIS, English language proficiency, which is access data, by the way, and then additional indicators. When you do all that math, you end up with a 9.6, okay? When you multiply the points that we earned, .6 times 7, .2 times 6, .1 times 0, .1 times 4, you end up with 5.8. 5.8 out of 9.6 is 60%, okay? So what this is telling us, it's fascinating. It's probably the best information we've ever received from the state in terms of looking at where did we do well, where did we not do well, okay? So if achievement is 60%, they're also saying is that ELA, math, and science are weighted equally, right? So people, well, how does science factor into this? Well, it's actually a third of the 60, so it's 20%. So for all students, there were four points for ELA, four points for math. We got four out of four in ELA. We only earned one point out of four in math. We earned two out of four in science, and so on. There's growth, English language proficiency, which you saw on Kelly's side, that 58% versus the 76, or the 50-something percent relative to 78%. Chronic absenteeism, we earned four out of four. You end up with that score right there at the bottom, okay? Hold on to your hats for a second, okay? This is the last, I'm really going to go into this.
Blow my hat off.
All right? How are these totals determined? You can click on detailed. I'm not going to do them all. You have all these reports. I could click on detailed. And this is the black box formula that the state has hidden for so many years. They're finally telling us how they determine everything, okay? So informative. In 27, let's just start. This is ELA up there, and this is math here. And there's a text box for each of those categories. So I'm just going to go through one. So for ELA, NIS, that was the average scaled score in 2017 for all students at NIS. Grade three, grade four, grade five. Remember that 440 up to 560, they scored a 492.9. So the state says, okay, that's your baseline. We're going to set your target, your target for your school, not comparative to anyone else in the state. Your target is 494.9, okay? So the average scaled score in 2018, two-thirds of the kids are the same. You know, we lost the grade five, we gained the grade three. That average scaled score is 497.5. So when you subtract 492.9 from that, you're going to change to 4.6. So we not only met our target, but we exceeded it by more than 1.5 points. When you exceed it by more than 1.5 points, you get to exceed the target, okay? If you met it, you get three points. If you partially improved, but you're, you know, not quite there, you get two points. If you stayed the same, you're one point. And if you declined more than 1.5 points from your previous average, which is going to come up to haunt us in some other data, and you can look at it, you can find it out. What's fascinating about this is if you look, and I'm starting with a real good positive here. If you look at NIS, ELA, they got a perfect score. In every category, okay, they exceed the target. The top one is the only one that's put on that previous chart in overall. But when you want to drill down, we're not doing it tonight, we can do it in a couple of weeks, this is where you can look at all your subgroups, as Steve was pointing out. You can look at all your subgroups for each subject at each school. And you can see, here's the lowest performing. Okay, that's why we got four points also for there, for ELA, okay? So like in math, you saw on that chart, sorry, I am going into math for a second. On that chart, you saw that all students had a one, right, on that previous page? But look at the lowest performing. Remember that 95%? The reason why they got 78 was the 60, 95 averaged out to 78. The lowest performing kids went from 464.7, average scaled score, first time this is being done, to 473.7. So they exceeded the target because they went up nine points. So if I talk to the math teachers at NIS, you know, hey, wait, before you get upset that you put in the Eureka and you worked really hard and lots of planning, you guys did really well with the bottom 25%. Bottom 25% really made a difference. Very informative. Tonight's not the night to get into it, but you can really look at a lot of these reports and see how each subgroup performed in any subject for growth, et cetera, et cetera, okay? So in essence of moving along, I could do, let's do, so all I have to do, if I go to, if I change this school to high school, I just go to accountability.
I'm just going to point out something interesting while Mike is pulling this up is for high school, because we have the additional category of high school completion, that's 20%, the weights and values of achievement are different. So we have a different area that's also counted. So clearly, you're not going to have certain categories depending on whether it's a high school or a non-high school. So the weights are different, which I think is very interesting to look at. The achievement is clearly always the focus of the state. They want our students to achieve. But they are also looking at growth. They're looking at attainment of English language proficiency, and they're looking at other factors which include different things at different schools. One would be the amount of students taking on advanced coursework, and another might be students' absenteeism.
So just quickly, two things that I see at the high school, okay? In achievement, ELA actually only earned one point because it dropped from the previous year in 2017. CPI was really high. This is a preview of what you're going to see when we return to the old system. Math, they met their targets, okay? Again, just 2017 and 2018. Science, math, excuse me, they exceed their targets. Science met their targets. There's some good growth in ELA, and good growth in math. Four-year cohort graduation rate, we met our target. But then, when you start looking, why is the high school only 44%? Remember, NIS was 78%. Why is the high school only 44? Well, 59 and 28 average out to 44. You start looking closely, where did we lose points? And this is when you can do some real drilling down work and try to figure out what is this information telling us. We lost 12 points on extended engagement rate, which is keeping students into school for that fifth year or getting students to come back and finish high school in that fifth year. Annual dropout rate, okay? And there's a big rubric in terms of what was your percentage in 2016 to 2017. Remember, dropout rate is always a year off because it takes a year to get the data in. And then chronic absenteeism. Again, kind of like, where's science? How does science factor in? Okay, we already talked about that. How does absenteeism factor in? So this is the first time, this is new, I should have put this on a new slide, where absenteeism is directly factored in to meeting your targets, which affects whether you've met your overall targets or not. So chronic absenteeism is defined as any student who's absent 10% more of the year. So of 180 days, any student who's absent 18 days or more. So that pops up as, wow, that's something we need to think about. What can we control? What can't we control?
Mike, because when we looked at NIS, they got all four points, meaning their absenteeism rate was a lot lower. You don't have to go back to it.
Watch how quickly I can, though, okay?
I shouldn't have said-
No, no, Steve, this is important to fully get into it.
He's giving some kudos to the-
No, and I actually got a request from a staff member- to ask about absenteeism. And I was going to suggest that we can deep dive into that next time.
Absolutely.
Next time. I'm trying.
Mike.
Mike, stop. It's okay.
So the 11% was the chronic absenteeism in 2017 of NIS.
Yep.
In 2018, it lowered to 8.3. The target was get it down to 9.1. So they not only got 9.1, they went lower. See that 2.7? It's more than 1.5. There's your four points, okay? So under that detailed review, which you all have in your packets, you can do some of that work, okay? All right, so just to sum up, we want to go back to our favorite slides of the past, which is CPI, okay? So remember how high school ELA, they have been doing really well. Any number above the line is above the state average, okay? Any number below the line is below the state average. So this is still a great CPI. The problem is, under the new system, it dropped from 2017. That's why the ELA achievement at the high school, there was only one point earned, okay? If you scroll the slide forward, math, first time in five years, math is above the state average. So when you compare their growth from 84.7, 89.6, that's why they earned four points for achievement. So that was a huge success to point out today to the high school teachers, like, wow, your math not only improved, but you got back on the right side of the line for the first time in five years, okay? That is very, very exciting. And then one more, science, you know, they've had a really good run, a little bit of dip. This is probably a tenth of a point. It's probably, you know, 89.6 compared to 89.7. So that was below the state, but with that growth, they're back now on that side there. So when we go back to what is old, what is new, we talked about some positives and negatives up at the high school. The grade 10 math profession in advance increased 67% to 76%. I mean, 76% of students are that 240 or above. Remember, high school MCAS is still legacy. It's still 2028. It's still CPI. It's going to change. We'll have to wait and see whether the high school gets that, you know, no level for one year or the hell of a harmless one year. Be interesting to see. Grade nine biology proficient in advance increased. And at the same time, not only did the students go up here, but they had fewer students failing from 7% to 3%. And then just to be fair, so I'm not all just picking the positives, yeah, it's great that that went up, but I pointed out also that in grade 10, the math actually numbers also increased. So they kind of had that on two ends of the spectrum improve. So do you want to just do the summary, or any more questions? So just to try to wrap it all together.
So for our summary, NIS, it was great to see that they made the 75% target. So that meant reaching those bars that the state set for us and/or exceeding those bars with 78%. At CPS, we were 64% for meeting-
Getting close to 75.
The targets. And at NHS, we were 44%. And all of that is still within the partially meeting. But I do want to point out that, as Mike said, the partially meeting ranges from 10% to 74.1. to seventy four point nine percent. So, that's a large window. So we're on the, closer to the seventy five percent. Two thousand and eighteen percentiles, we had NIS at thirty six, CPS at thirty, and NHS at forty two. And by comparison, to the two thousand and sixteen percentiles.
Cause remember, there's no levels, no percentiles last year for three through eight grades.
We, we, so we increased from NES, which is now NIS, but it was the same level of students tested. So we increased from that twenty percent to thirty six percent. And CPS stayed relatively close to the same. And NHS did actually have a percentile last year. So they have increased their percentile this year as well. So all good things, heading in the right direction. The new system allows us to set targets with incremental growth, and it lets us look at year to year. We find out what these targets are, so we know, you know, what point values. But of course, we're just looking for, how can we improve our student learning and instruction? And how can we support their engagement in the school so that we can tackle those issues like absenteeism that we want to target as well? And we're moving kids in the right direction. And just celebrating great growth for NHS math and science. NHS ELA, the CPI continues to be high. So we're looking in a positive state for all of our students at that end point of our K to twelve district. Thanks.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you so much, there was a lot of information. And I look forward to hearing a more in-depth presentation. The MCAS alt, you mentioned that.
Yes.
Those statistics are not included in what we're seeing tonight, is that?
They are. I would have to go back to each of the reports though and pull out to see how many students there are, to see what the relative impact would be. What the state has done is, it has said that students who are making progress on their MCAS alt portfolios now count in that meets or exceeds bracket. So they, their progress on that will count positively for us if they are meeting or exceeding their own expectations. And then conversely, if they are not able to reach that, that those would then be students that are marked as not meeting or partially meeting. And to me, this is important because we have a large population of special education students here. Not all of special education students take the alt MCAS, so I don't wanna paint with a broad brush. But the alt portfolio is a powerful tool for those students who wouldn't be able to demonstrate progress on the computer-based test, but rather can benefit from the option of having a portfolio. So now we're able to see, are those students also making progress? And if not, you know, what do we need to put into effect to help them make progress?
It would be interesting to see the number of students in what schools. You know, how many in each school are taking exams?
We'd have to break it down. It's very easily done with high school because it's one grade. So it would be just doing account, but it's, it's definitely doable.
And then my next question is the student to student information. You guys dig deep. So you have the ability to look, you know, at the same group of students the following year and how they're performing. But do you look at individual students and their growth? And then, is the school system then implementing support systems based on a particular student's math score or ELA score?
Yes, and yes. And oftentimes, we are triangulating that data with other pieces of information. CPS uses the map. NES, or NIS uses the AIMS Web and the F and P. And NIS, or NES actually uses their F and P levels. They don't have, of course, the MCAS data, but they use their F and P levels in the AIMS Web. So we are able to look at all of those data points together.
Because I think it would be challenging when you have, you see the third grade and now the students in fourth grade, you know, how do you bring that student back to third grade math to help support them with the, you know, subject that they were struggling?
So, so one of the first things we did two weeks ago when we first got the data, it was still embargoed, is the teachers got it. We gave the data to the teachers and they looked at the roster of the students they had last year. And they looked at the roster of the new students they have this year, okay? So we're not doing that here, obviously, publicly. But the teachers are looking at individual students and those growth numbers that you talk about. Then they're also looking at standards, okay? And how, is there a curriculum gap, you know? Did we forget to teach, teach measurement, you know, or a certain topic in geometry from, from year to year? They have those standard reports. So we, I wouldn't go into that detail in, in this environment. But I assure you, it started at least two weeks ago at the grade level meetings and also department meetings at the middle school and at the high school to look at those student rosters and those standard reports. So yeah, they're on it.
And they actually even beyond that can drill down deeper. They have item analysis reports and rosters of students. So you can see for the released questions, how scoot students scored. And you can see how students scored on the writing prompts for the ones that, that were released, or not writing prompts, but those response to text questions that are written.
Jen, I can confirm that at CPS, the teachers definitely used math to, to identify particular students that had particular needs. So they do drill down that deep.
Yeah, I was wondering more, you know, the earlier NIS level, how they, how they do that and how they circled back to a full grade earlier, you know, now that the student has moved up, so. But they do have AIMS Web.
And I, I think it's, it's trying to, we can use this data, and it's a point. And it can tell us where a student was at that particular time. But that's why we like to look at it with other pieces of data. And even also continue to look at formative assessments because sometimes if a student wasn't performing at meeting a particular standard on the test, or there was a particular area that gave them difficulty, they may have recouped and made gains there. So we need to continue to progress monitor and see going forward, what can we do to help this student? What can we do to, you know, keep them growing? So it's, it's one data point that does give us some information. But it's most useful when we couple it with those other pieces of data that we have available.
Thank you.
I have a question. Why is absenteeism here? Because it seems to me, the performance data is like you have a group of runners running. And then the absenteeism is you separate out the ones that are left-handed. Because it sort of isn't relevant to anything.
So absenteeism, well, it's always been there in accountability. The old accountability system that, that was in place, some of the, the deep slides in, in the presentation would, would show, you know, what is the cumulative progress in performance index? Is like there's CPI, there's CPPI. And absenteeism and graduation was always there for the high school. This is the first year that it's in the formula for NIS and CPS. And, you know, when you see at CPS and NHS that we earned zero four points and it affects our overall, whether we met targets or not, I think it draws attention that we have a lot of students who are chronically absent. And if you ask teachers, they'll tell you, it's a challenge to, to teach when students are absent thirty or, or forty days. I'll add another piece, is when we had students for the first time, not, not graduate this year at the high school because they hadn't met their competency determination with MCAS, okay? We filed appeals on behalf of nine students. The state wouldn't look at half of them because the students were absent thirty, forty, fifty days. The state said, we're not even going to look at their GPA and their class schedules until you can tell us that they've attended school. So the state values that. There's, this is the first time we're seeing it, not just at the high school, but also in the other buildings.
And I think it speaks to the idea that we really need to engage families early on about the importance of, of getting our students to school and, and making sure that they're supported so that they stay in school. So I think some of it probably is related to a lot of the social emotional learning that is, the state is also very interested and invested in as well.
Tim.
I think it's that whole child approach.
I, I would see a direct causal relationship between being in school or not being in school and your scores, your learning. So if absenteeism is a big issue, however many kids that is, their scores are gonna be lower. I, I think it's a good, I don't know, that it ought to factor into accountability necessarily the way it does. That's different. But I would imagine now, did he say, Peter, you guys were oh for four on that one too? That is an issue that I know has started to be addressed at CPS. I'm assuming it has at NPS.
NHS, sorry, John.
But accountability, if you're sort of dinging us vis a vis the absenteeism, it's sort of detracts from the performance end of it, I think.
It is, it, Tim, it's, it's ten percent of one area, additional indicators. Whereas the achievement is sixty percent, the growth is twenty percent, progress towards attaining English proficiency. So it's, it's not that large. I think they just wanna highlight the importance of, as a school community, how are we getting students to school, making sure they stay in school and, you know, are getting what they need in school?
No, I'm not denying that that's important. That's extremely important, it's just.
If I can just add, this is part of the state emphasizing that we are trying to get students college and career ready. If we are trying to get them college and career ready, it's not all about their intelligence or their academic performance.
Right.
It's those other skills of.
Commitment.
Commitment.
Responsibility.
Exactly.
All those wonderful things. First of all, and I wouldn't want one of those students that missed a gallbladder removal day. Removing my gallbladder, I'm just saying.
Are they doing that in our nursing program now, are they?
But it seems to me that you're attaching it to performance when it isn't in fact related to the performance.
But it could be.
But it is.
They missed an important concept that day. And they can't, they missed an important concept that day.
And it absolutely could be a contributor to performance. And for some students, it's not gonna be, and it's not gonna show causation. It, it might have a correlation, and that's probably why they're tracking it. Because they'd like to see.
Chronic absentee figure is almost a month of school.
Yeah.
Overall, I mean, that kid's not getting a month of learning.
Half the goal of being a success in school is coming to school. You have to do that first. I do wanna ask this question if I may, and then a lot of hands, I see that. Do you, are any of these students, those that we, that drop out to go to work and things like that, are those numbers part of this problem?
So it's an interesting discussion, and we're not sure, and we're not necessarily able to tell at this point. We'd have to do some more digging to find that out. Maybe not even on the accountability charts, but maybe through Aspen Records conversations. But we were talking today, actually, after the high school presentation with someone about, if that is the case, if these are students that are not here because they have work or family obligations, what are some creative solutions we can think of in terms of, you know, making school more accessible for those students? And using some of the resources we have in place, like the Apex online learning. And or thinking outside the box in terms of nights, weekends, additional programs.
Yeah, so, I was, I was gonna ask whether you can ask the reasons for, for students being absent and what are some of the resources that we can offer to families for students who are out of school? And, and I know in the past, we've had conversations of parents taking their students out for two weeks or three weeks, and they have to unenroll and re-enroll. And I think our seasonal issues too, you know, we lose students for periods of time. But I think it would be interesting and important to, to drill down and learn a little bit more if we can legally ask why they're absent.
And we can legally ask the question. I think it depends upon how we ask the question, in what manner, and with what intention. Because if we're trying to proactively engage students in, in coming to school, we do wanna find out what's wrong, but we have to be really careful about how we message that.
It's related to what I was gonna ask, which is, when you look at that chronic absenteeism, can we go to break it out to what is chronic absenteeism illness? I think when you think, when you notice that jump from middle school, from intermediate school to middle school, that's when you start to see mental health needs popping up, that sort of stuff.
Yes.
Injuries, cause kids are more involved in sports. But I think if we were to look very separately at the extended, the extended vacations, I think that's, I think that's really.
And I think you have to pull out and, and, and control for that. So I think it's, it's just, it's an indicator that for me is like, wow, maybe that should be on our radar before students hit high school.
Um, it just, I don't know what kind of conversations you're having around science, but I'm looking at the numbers and they're quite significant in sort of the changes from NIS CPS to high school. So can you help me understand that a little bit?
Yeah, we're having meetings all the time to talk about, uh, science performance. Science, uh, overall in the state is pretty low. And I just, I just wanna remind everyone that science is still in the old CPI system. So where we look, you know, for lower CPI scores in, in science, they're lower across, across the state. Don't wanna get too far into it today. We could talk about that when the principals speak in the future. There's a variety of reasons why science has, is constantly kind of, in my opinion, pushed off a little bit. Is there a certain data point that you're looking at? Because there's some, there's some, as I said earlier, there's a lot of positives and there's equal number of kinda not-yets.
Well, it, it just jumped out at me as I'm, I'm looking at the numbers, and there's so much information. And I realize I gotta, myself, I'm gonna do more digging. But I just wondered sort of the storyline behind what you would say through the NIS CPS and, and a high school. Where we've, I mean, and I see the state numbers and they seem more low as well as far as the proficient in advanced, but I thought it was quite significant, especially in middle school.
So unfortunately, next year, science most likely will have that no level year. So we're gonna lose a year of data, and it'll be held harmless with a new baseline. Because it's changing from CPI legacy MCAS to next generation and the, and full NGSS test. So we'll have to see if, if they're gonna follow the same system or not. And I called the state on that actually, and, and they said they're having a meeting this month to determine that for, for next year, for 2019.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, Mike, this is a comment, not a question, a statement.
I'm listening.
I packed up my stuff, just so you know. One of my major questions when we deep dive will be about our apparent continuing lagging in math compared to ELA. And I really will want to get into that more. That was my statement.
Thank you. We have enlisted, we've enlisted the help of some of our colleagues to make sure that they note those kinds of questions.
Thank you, Jamie, for that.
Mike, I wish you could be more enthusiastic in your presentation.
Well, like I said, you have all the reports, and hopefully if we met goal two is now you can really get into them, understand how the reports work. There's so much data in those supplemental reports.
But thank you, thank you. We'll be going on that.
Okay, committee discussion and votes to be taken. Do we have the substitute rate?
Yes, I have a recommendation for the committee. Pass those down. And I'll, I'll just read it quickly for those people who don't have a copy. But in accordance with policy GCG, the school committee shall set the daily rate for substitute teachers, including extended-term substitutes. After a review of the existing rates and our inability to obtain adequate substitutes in the present market, I would recommend that the school committee raise the established.
I would recommend that the school committee raise the established substitute rate. Presently, the daily rate for teachers is a hundred dollars. And for TAs is, I think.
Is that seventy?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five?
And, or eighty, I think it's eighty actually, yep. And so I'm recommending that we go up to one-twenty, that's an increase of twenty percent. And for the teacher assistant, from eighty to a hundred dollars a day. Long-term rates will stay the same, be one step in column for, for the daily rate. I'm not positive that this will increase our numbers substantially, I'll be honest. I hope that it will. I think we all know, all of those, and the schools know that we're struggling getting substitutes. One reason that we're struggling is that we've taken almost every substitute we ever had and put them into teaching assistant positions. And that has decimated the ranks of our substitute teachers. The other, the other reason, quite frankly, is the market. The economy is good and people have other options. So I think it's time to bring it back up to the one-twenty and one-hundred. We've done some comparisons of Cape schools and the Vineyard. And you'll find them ranging from sixty dollars to eighty, eighty-five dollars on the Cape. And the Vineyard is presently at ninety dollars for teachers. So I think that this is a reasonable response for, and I, I'm sorry I didn't have it on the agenda, but I didn't wanna wait for another meeting, cause I think we need to move.
Do we have any questions?
Well, I guess the obvious question would be, you're comfortable that we can cover this in the budget?
In the budget, yeah, in, in the existing budget. I mean, I, I'm, I'm a little bit worried, but, but on the flip side, if we don't have subs, we're not spending that budget. And so I don't think we're looking to make money on what was budgeted for subs. And it's tough, you know, it's, it's really tough for the other teachers and the administrators who are there picking up the pieces when a sub's in. And, and when you don't have a sub, then you're really, you're borrowing a TA from here to go there, or the teachers covering during their prep period as they do at the high school, or an administrator is stepping into a class. So it's, it's a challenge and I think we, it's a move that we have to make and we've been considering for a while.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, good news and bad news. The good news is, I wholeheartedly agree, and I've had people talk to me just recently, in the last day or two, about the possibility of raising these rates. I'm not convinced it's enough. I'm uncomfortable voting on it today, cause it just showed up today. I don't think it's gonna have a significantly, significantly negative impact on the school system to put this on the agenda for a vote on the twenty-third. I'd like to ask around. I mean, the people I talked to or who spoke with me about it thought it should go up, but we didn't know it was gonna be on the agenda, so we didn't talk about amounts. I think it's short-sighted not to pass this tonight and implement it immediately. And I think that, I think a hundred and twenty dollars is far beyond any rate that you'll find with more research. But the school committee can do as it wishes. Yeah, Mike, I, I don't think research is the issue, I think our market is the issue. You know, do we really think we're gonna get a significantly increased number of substitutes for twenty dollars a day? I question it, I wonder if it shouldn't be higher for that reason. I don't care what they do in the Vineyard, the Vineyard has more people than we do. The Cape has more people. So I'd just like to wait and put this for a vote in two weeks.
Well, I'll give my two cents. My two cents is, I don't think if it's gonna change, we're not gonna pay him a thousand dollars a day. So if we're not gonna pay him a thousand dollars a day and Mike has picked out this number, I think it's, I would be in favor of just putting this in and then if it needs to be changed, up or down? Cause I think it has gone down in the past.
Went down in two thousand eleven and back up in two thousand fifteen and now up again. Those are the dates that.
Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to increase stated in the, um, the document.
I second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, vote to approve the budget planning calendar.
So Mr. Chairman, it's, it's still not completed, still waiting for some dates from the town of Nantucket. I have heard a proposed date for town meeting, which is Monday, April first, at six o'clock. That is not in stone though, they're still taking a look at that, so.
April fourth, okay?
Yeah.
So that we could.
I, I think you should have me bring it back when we have more definitive information on that. There are a lot of dates not filled in.
Okay, so we will table that. Okay, next, a vote to approve the donation from Educate Inc. to CPS gift account in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-six cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve the donation from the Joseph L. Viera Fund to student athletes football for eighteen pairs of sweatpants and training shorts to be used during the two, two thousand eighteen season to the tune of nine hundred and eighteen dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Just point out a typo in the letter, I, I don't know if it's gone out already, um, approximate. And, uh.
We'll check that.
May I ask a question about the next vote before we vote on the nature's.
We didn't, we didn't vote on this yet.
No, I know, I know, oh, we didn't vote, okay, sorry, sorry.
Where is the?
Um, first paragraph.
First paragraph, here, right here, Tim.
The word approximate is misspelled.
Can I show you?
Okay.
Okay, great.
I see it.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
So is that going to negate?
No, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna vote.
Okay.
Well, let's.
Just make a change. I'm ready to say aye when you ask.
We have a motion to approve?
We had that, yes, we do.
Miss, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm glad you studied that. A vote to approve the donation from Nantucket Lions Council to the fifth grade nature's classroom field trip. Final bands, final balance for donation equals two thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars.
Well, can I ask a question? So is this, this is for last year's fifth grade trip? Okay, alright, that was my question. I was not sure if it was for this upcoming trip and if it was to go towards, we spoke about this at policies, whether it would be a field trip specific fund or a grade five fund, so I was just, that was my question.
Follows the fifth grade.
Mm-hmm, okay. Ready to vote?
I made a motion.
All in favor?
Second, oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
December, September eighteenth, meeting minutes?
I will vote to approve, as I understand it has been slightly changed in what will be the final electronic version, which notes that Jamie confirmed that our Chromebooks can only be accessed by the NPSK.org student ID. And just ask that that language be inserted, understand it has been.
We did receive that, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So I move to approve those missed.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Transfers and invoices.
Make the motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent's report.
Really just gonna talk about the enrollment. Today is October first, so these become the figures that the state uses. We have a total of sixteen hundred and eighty-six students in our schools, which is the highest ever. As you can see, as you look at it, we have a, a fifth grade of a hundred and forty-one students and a, an eleventh grade junior class of a hundred and fifty-one. Not sure how we're gonna do graduation next year. And, but even, if, if you look at that fifth grade number of one forty-one, that's before the private schools enter in ninth grade. So that class looms as just, you know, that could be one sixty, one sixty-five, it's hard to say, but it's pretty scary. Our numbers continue to grow by over fifty students per year and in some years, it's been a hundred. I have recently had a meeting with the capital committee and have told them that they need to be planning for a new school. I can't believe that I'm saying that, but if you're adding fifty students a year for, you know, four years, that's two hundred students in eight years, that's a school. So we are really tight sneakers at the high school and middle school right now. We have some room to growth at, to grow at NES and NIS. But if this community doesn't get a handle on growth, they're going to have to increase the infrastructure to deal with that growth. And I'm not just talking about the school infrastructure, I'm talking about the infrastructure across the community. And I'm, I'm very concerned, because this isn't what we envisioned when we built a new school. You always hope when you build a new school that you have a, a fifteen-year solution. But be forewarned, it's coming around the bend and it's coming fast. So I would imagine that we're probably in the next three years going to be looking at modular classrooms for, for the middle and high school to bridge the gap and, and we're going to plug those figures in. So we have plugged a figure in with Capcom for a new school, but I just have to be, you know, forthright and honest that we're there again.
Well, I have one word in response to that, yikes.
I would say with the, that sixty-unit building things going up, that, that's a real reality.
Right.
That, cause that could potentially even bring more people to the island that aren't already here. We're talking about solving the housing problem that we already have.
Yeah.
But whenever you do something like that, you're likely to get more people in. So I think that's definitely a real possibility. On the enrollment report, and I know I'm always looking for more information, but because it's been brought to our attention about our absentee, absenteeism, I just wonder if that couldn't be an item added each month? Just so we have a take on it, maybe the number of absenteeism and how many students it involves, so we can have a real picture of what we're dealing with. I think it's, school committee's way of being able to be in, in the know, if you will.
I, I think if I may, Zona, through the chair, probably you would want to see a certain level of absenteeism. Like how many students have more than, you know, ten days out of a certain point? Cause that, that will help you more than the absenteeism on any one day.
I, I agree, but maybe, maybe five, just because you, I don't, we don't wanna see it when it's already a real problem.
Yeah.
Ten is a real problem to me. Five, not yet a real problem, but enough for somebody to have a conversation with someone.
Yeah.
So if you would, I would make that suggestion.
Yep. We will do that. Thank you.
Any subcommittee reports?
Well, the EST negotiating subcommittee would like to add it to the agenda on October twenty-third for approval by this committee.
That's impressive.
Okay, you?
You're dealing with very experienced negotiators here.
Yep.
Not dealing with rookies. Okay.
I told you it was gonna work that way, Alice.
Okay.
Hi, um, just for your policy, I just wanna, you know, reemphasize that a question was posed to us that, you know, I think it's fine if Mike addresses it through admin, back to Mrs. Melo, but in addition, report to us on the next meeting so that we're, so it's publicly explained what that is.
Sure.
If you don't mind.
And if I may just, not, um, sub, uh, committee reports, but just a couple of comments. Superintendent search certainly was brought up earlier by Mrs. Crowley. Are we waiting until, I know we said we would, we would use the time with Glenn Kucha to ask for some conversation and, and sort of guidelines, but, um.
But I think NASDAQ and mask have both made overshores towards helping us conduct. And I think we will hear Glenn's proposal and I think we have to look at NASDAQ's and then see which one seems to be better and then start talking about a committee to get that rolling.
Yeah, and just so I'm not frustrated in the morning, Mike, you sent us links or a link to the NAS, NAS?
Um, actually, I got in touch with NASDAQ and I've been in touch with mask. I asked NASDAQ to send us a, um, a, their brochure and their, and a proposal, which I forwarded, but now I'm not sure that that went to anybody. We've had significant problems with the change to the NPSK.org. And so I've, I've re-sent several things recently to you, but I need to send that back out because I did send that last week. So I think it's, I think it's good that you, you know, that you review those and you compare them and see which way that the committee wants to go. They, both groups offer several levels of the search. They can just send out the brochure and disseminate, or they can take you soup to nuts all the way through the search. We have had a number of people who have contacted my office or Tim to be on the committee and we're just putting those in a file right now until the school committee determines its process, but.
And I think I was reminded on your search, Mike, that we had a community member that led the team. Is that something that the committee thinks that they would go along with again?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, what was the makeup, if anybody remembers exactly, of that committee?
I do.
Nine years ago.
Micro.
Eight, ten years ago.
Judy Lee led that search and some of you may know Judy, she was a, a community member and I think did a marvelous job. But there were educators on it, there were, I think, two school committee members on it, there were community members at large on it. I think the challenge for the committee will be, you want a representative search group, but you don't want twenty people at, at the table. And so how do you make it representative and yet not unwieldy? And that will be, and whether you decide to vet the candidates through the first round or whether you have NASDAQ or mask vet that and, you know, cull that group out to what a reasonable number for you. So there are a lot of different ways. I will say that in the month of September and now October, there have been six or seven superintendent searches. there have been six or seven superintendent searches initiated in Massachusetts alone.
It's a topic at the conference this year, so.
Yeah, so there, it's out there, there's a generation of us, um, retiring, so.
So my comment, I just wanna add is that I think it should be representative and it may be, to me, as high as fifteen, I think parent representative or two. I think teacher representative or two. I definitely think the school administrators should be a part of it. This is just my opinion.
Yep.
And a couple of school committee members, if not three. I think it should be Tim and two others personally, um, and community rep, educator and non educator.
Tim and two others would make it a school committee.
That constitutes.
Is that, is that a problem, it can't be a quorum? That part I wasn't sure. So anyway, but your, your numbers can get up a little high, just if you get a good representation. I mean, because a superintendent is a very important position. I think we've been very fortunate over the last, um, nine years, ten years. And it's gonna be, it's a tough act to follow, if you will. So that's just my three cents.
Yeah, um, a couple of other things I just wanna bring up. Under the student success report that we're gonna have on November twentieth, can I just ask clarification? I know I asked for high school to present for that, but can we also ask for CPS to give us an update on, on the program and, and the online?
On the twentieth?
It's down here for the twentieth.
November twentieth.
Oh, no, November, yeah, okay, I was thinking you were talking about October. I don't think that would be a problem, um.
And then lastly, I just, just wanted to ask the school committee if anybody has any interest as we're looking at the, uh, goals, district goals. If anybody is interested in putting, uh, school start as a conversation or school uniforms as a.
I don't know, what was the first thing, school what?
Start time, school, the starting time of school.
School uniforms, just for that.
Yeah, I think that's very interesting, and school start times.
I just think it's two very important conversations that we've sort of danced around at this table. And this might be a good opportunity to put it out there as a.
Well, and there is one school system in Massachusetts that just did that.
Mm-hmm.
So it's being done.
But I, I think that's a question we can also ask Glenn, if he's, you know, has he worked with schools that have had that happen and. So anyway, just in full disclosure, without emailing you all individually, just to mention that. Thank you.
And it's homecoming, everybody be out there, lots of sports, lots of floats, and a very good time. So I hope you'll all be there.
It's a little bit of a different schedule, so take a look at it. There's a dance on Thursday night because it's over a three-day weekend. The parade is in, on Friday afternoon at four-thirty. So it's, it's not the traditional ten o'clock in the morning on Saturday morning parade. And then the games begin around one o'clock and end with a football game at five-thirty.
Is it done for you? That's what we thought.
Is there, is there a schedule maybe that you put together, Mr. Buckley? Would you mind sharing that? Thank you.
And that, if I could just add, I, I went out, um, as many of you know, I like to see the kids in different games. I went out to watch the golf team, um, play today and it was wonderful. I, I, I followed, uh, Kai Otani and, um, Sidney Higgins around and Ben was there, um, Billings and, um, so it was, it was fun for me. Uh, um, I'm not sure that I learned how to play the game any better, but, uh, it was, it was a great, yeah, I meant.
And you didn't, didn't get told off by any refs or anything?
No, I, I didn't, um, make any gaps.
I, I spoke to Mike and I told him that at the run for recovery, uh, the other day, our students really, not only did they win, but, uh, they really exemplified being members of a team and were really a very positive influence and a very, very positive day. And I really was impressed, I was very impressed that they won, uh, since we had some pretty good runners there that they blew the doors off. Okay, can we have a motion or a adjournment?
So moved, second.
Oh, oh, students.
Student updates, um, homecoming, coming up.
Sorry.
You guys hit most of the major things, um, the library opening, um, got moved back a little bit.
Yep.
Um, I don't know if that's really been communicated to the students yet. I know it was communicated to me because, um, Fairus is in the process of moving in there. Um, maybe it was in the Monday message, but I'm not, I'm so well-read. And, uh, yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's going to be great. I would, I would say you could peek in, but you really should wait until it's done. And if you can fight the temptation, um, it's gonna be pretty, pretty neat, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.